After the staff report, we will open it up for the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicants representative to make any comments. Members of the public will then be invited to provide. You can provide anything that you'd like. And we'll first move to ex parte and let's see. I gotta expand my list here so we can see. Jason, do you have any ex parte on this item?
No ex parte.
Dennis?
Beyond reading the letter from Mr. Huffman and then we heard this item as a design review committee last week or the week before.
Tori?
No ex parte.
Okay, Victoria?
No.
Okay, and I did see this when it came before the DRC a couple of weeks ago. So good, then we'll go ahead and we'll move into our staff report. Who's giving our staff report today? Kelly?
Yep, I've got that for you. So good evening, commissioners. The project before us is the Del Rio Ranch Project. It occupies the former Walmart site at the intersection of Del Rio Road and El Camino Real. It's about 26.2 acres in size, currently zoned commercial retail and multifamily high density. A little bit of site history for those who don't know, there was a specific plan approved on the project site as well as some surrounding sites in 2012. On this particular parcel, it did include a large scale retail store, which was the Walmart location. It also included three acres of high density residential land and two commercial pads for either retail restaurant development or some other use that was allowed in the commercial retail zone at that time. The specific plan was updated recently in 2020. We did modify the list of allowable uses once Walmart officially pulled out of the site. The uses that we added into the specific plan are consistent with the underlying zoning and the vision for the Del Rio area and included a couple of modifications specific to the project site location. And then we did remove Walmart specific information from the specific plan. We then had an application for the Del Rio Ranch Project, which was authorized to proceed by the city council in March of 2021, which included moving the residentially zoned portion of the property with a slight increase in size. It included entertainment based commercial centers with some commercial presence at the corner, an amphitheater and a parking garage. And it also included a tourist resort that had a hotel, RV park and some glamping spaces. So tonight, we're looking at general plan and zoning map amendments to adjust the residentially zoned portion of the property. We're also looking at a specific plan amendment related to circulation, the public road location and the adjustment to the residential portion of the site. And in addition, we're looking at conditional use permits to create a master plan of development on the site and also allow some conditionally allowed uses. This one's a little bit unique. It's a large project site area. And so this master plan of development will be a tiered master plan of development. And we will come back for some adjustments to that master plan of development with each phase of development so that we can have greater detail at that time. So the proposed project includes 3.6 acres of residentially zoned land. The residentially zoned land is proposed to be located, what would this be, the eastern portion of the site adjacent to Rio Rita Road. There's also approximately 30,000 square feet of entertainment center located directly on the corner of Del Rio Road and El Camino Real. There is an attached parking structure garage to that entertainment center, which will allow for increased walkability throughout the project site and limited surface level parking lots. In addition, there's proposed to be a conference center along Del Rio Road, which would allow for some events to happen in that location. There's also some retail and residential condos located along El Camino Real to give commercial presence along that street frontage with some surface level parking lots for adjacent parking opportunities. The applicants also envision a hotel to be central to the site as well as an open air amphitheater with some potential hotel units lining the rear of the amphitheater as well. The blue portion of the site here is proposed for the RV lodging resorts. So these would be approximately 60 RV spaces here. And then the surrounding green areas here would allow for some glamping style opportunities, which would be affixed cabins, potentially some airstream trailers, some old VW buses, things of that nature to create an experience based glamping facility. So as I mentioned, it is a tiered approval process. This is an overarching master plan of development that shows general locations for land uses and some development standards at a higher level. And then the applicants will be required to come back for a conditional use permit to finalize the master plan of development for each phase in greater detail. That CUP would be required for the RV resort, the commercial area, the amphitheater and the conference center. And then the multifamily residential consistent with the original Del Rio Road specific plan would require DRC review before moving forward to ensure that all development standards have been met. So this is a map of the current and proposed zoning and general plan designations. You can see that a majority of the site remains commercial retail zoning and then the smaller portion is for the residential area. In terms of the specific plan amendments, we did need to make changes to the circulation diagram. The original public road, if you can see my mouse, was in this location here and it connected the properties to the south. The applicants are currently proposing the public dedicated road to separate the residentially zoned portion from the commercially zoned portion and create through traffic that aligns with the Bispo Road for future residential development to the south. Part of their residential or their circulation plan also does maintain the connection to El Camino Real, but creates a secondary connection at that location and becomes the main connection for the RV resort. In terms of the conditional use permit, as I had stated previously, this is an overarching master plan of development for the design concept and the location of the land uses. And it also includes the approval of conditionally allowed uses to ensure that the applicant's proposal can move forward on the site. That includes the conference center, the mixed use buildings and the RV resort. In terms of the phasing, there is a phasing plan associated with the development as related to us from the applicants early on. So phase one does include the RV resort portion and may include the glamping sites as well. In addition to some of the potential boxcar hotel units behind the amphitheater site. Phase two would include the commercial center, including the entertainment and mixed use buildings. Phase three would be the multifamily residential portion of the site. And then the conference facility hotel and amphitheater would come at any point in time really in development, but is envisioned to come a little later when they have an operator or see a demand for those types of uses. I did want to note at this time that the applicant has also requested a temporary use phase to include some RV parking at the corner of Del Rio and El Camino Real and installation of some of the glamping sites with some temporary restroom and shower facilities and temporary utilities and road grading at that time. Staff is not recommending a temporary use phase. There are some municipal code issues with establishing a temporary use that's intended for a longer period of time than just a few weekends like an event would be. And there's sort of some precedent setting in terms of establishing temporary uses of a site prior to its formal development. However, I know the applicants do have a presentation that includes the temporary use phase of the site and we can talk about that more later if you have questions. So this is the overall site plan of the development. You can see some internal circulation, traffic analysis has been prepared. All of these intersections off of the main streets have been looked at for safety. The intersection at El Camino Real and this entrance here, which aligns with the service entrance to the Mission Oaks Retail Center will be a signalized intersection consistent with a specific plan requirements. Abyssal Road will be a new public road that the city will accept for maintenance and that will connect to future projects to the south. There is currently an existing development called the Emerald Bridge Development that's under construction just to the south of this project, a few parcels. That does include another leg of the public road. And so eventually this public road will connect with that one to provide for some increased circulation through that residential area. In terms of the design theme, this is the requirement of the specific plan, which requires a contemporary agrarian style design theme. Some of the features called out in the specific plan for inclusion in buildings in the area are gable and shed roof elements, vertical elements at corners and entry points, some earth toned colors, some varied materials such as wood, metal, concrete and glass, large window openings, geometric forms, some layered facade elements. This is an example picture from the specific plan of how those pieces come together. So this is the preliminary proposed commercial design. It is a conceptual level design at this point. And again, the commercial area will have to come back when they are closer to construction document development for an additional review of site design and architectural design. These are the design theme features that the applicant has proposed and it is consistent with the specific plan. Their design concept includes shed roof features, a clear story in the conference center, a mix of wood, concrete, metal and glass as required by the specific plan. There are some conditions added to add some vertical accent features and the inclusion of a vertical medical metal sighting when they come back for their final CUP. This is the, some images of the glamping concept that they're proposing. So they do have different forms of cabins. They are proposing to create two onsite ponds that would allow for sort of this waterside cabin feature to be added. They're also looking at sort of vintage VW buses and some onsite cabins as well as airstream trailers. The project does include some height exceptions. There were some height exceptions already written into the specific plan. However, some of the roof forms in the commercial center on the corner of Del Rio and El Camino Real do exceed that. And so the specific plan has been amended to allow for that additional height for the roof features to create some variety throughout the site. It's important to note that the site is fairly decently sloped. There's about 100 foot elevation difference between Del Rio and El Camino Real and the Rio Rita Road up at the top corner. And so the applicants are utilizing the topography of the site for their uses. Whereas Walmart had a large graded pad that required about a 60 foot retaining wall. The applicants are trying to work with the topography of the site and keep existing trees so that their impact on the surrounding neighborhood remains low. And this is their preliminary landscape concept. So again, with each phase, they will be coming back with a more detailed concept. But this concept does include street trees and ample landscaping throughout the public spaces and around the RV and glamping sites. It also includes some, a screening concept for the RV pads to show how that terrorist RV section can be, can be screened from El Camino Real. So the recommendation tonight is that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution recommending that the city council approve the project features and conceptual design concept to move forward. It would include the general plan and zoning map amendments as well as the specific plan amendment for the Del Rio Ranch Project.
Then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to give that presentation at this time.
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners, city staff and general public. Thank you for your time this evening and allowing us to share our very special Del Rio Ranch project with all of you. For the record, I'm Ted Lawton from Cal Coastal Communities. We're a local, family owned real estate company. And I think it's important to share that a large portion of our team live, work and own businesses here in Atascadero in the North County. And sitting with me, I do have Jennifer Kim and I have Jack Phelan, our other partners. So they're, they're here in the room. If you have any questions going forward. Also, I want to share that we are focused on creating projects that complement the city of Atascadero's economic development goals and initiatives. And we are fortunate that the big box Walmart project was not developed as it would have graded the entire site down 75 up to 100 feet in certain areas. It would have removed all of the original old heritage oak trees. It would have created a larger traffic impact on the surrounding areas and neighborhoods. And it already allowed for RV parking, overnight parking in their six acre parking lot for free, meaning there would have been no TOT benefit to the city. It was approximately 118 square feet of commercial retail space. I'm going to move on. It is very rare to be a part of a project like Del Rio Ranch because of its ability to transform a city like Atascadero. In the industry, we call projects like these city makers as they can truly anchor a city and give a city a real sense of identity and character. Our project is 100% focused on place making and experience, which we believe is in perfect alignment with Atascadero's goals for future development and growth. As we all know, the big box store, commercial retail of the past is no, is no longer a viable option for the future. So what cities and developers have discovered is that these old obsolescent properties and lots can be revitalized by adding a vibrant, mixed use, indoor, outdoor focus on experience, activities, quality of life, and they're finding they are now wildly successful. The point is that the retail commercial of the future looks a lot more like an indoor outdoor farmer's market full of fun activities rather than a large commercial strip mall or big box store. This next slide illustrates a small excerpt from the multiple pages of deed restrictions placed on the property by Walmart. These deed restrictions presented enormous challenge for our team as it would be for any other interested development company. However, because of the city council's understanding of what Atascadero needs are for the future, we were successful in getting our project approved by Walmart's legal team, the city council authorization to proceed on March 23rd and again at the DRC on May 13th. So Del Rio Ranch, Del Rio Ranch will be a premier commercial resort recreation destination for both local and outside of the area guests because of the incredible location and COVID friendly project design. The Del Rio Ranch will be the ideal setting for creating fun filled, memorable experiences designed around a fun, safe family atmosphere. However, this project comes with a high price tag. This project we are projecting will cost around $150 million. This is a challenge for our commercial lenders to finance based on the size and the financial impacts of the pandemic. This has required our lender to create a very strategic approach to financing of the project and phases of the project. The key to successfully acquiring commercial financing in the current pandemic, post pandemic environment is tied to the project's ability to produce income in each of the project phases through final completion. So a project of this size and magnitude will need to be broken down into very distinct phases. We see those as being the four phases Kelly had already presented in her presentation. Phase one, day one means that upon city council approval, hopefully on June 22nd, we will start the site cleanup and beautification process. This means on June 23rd, which will, will include removal of existing litter, old car parts, dead trees, old foundations and other debris on the property. We will also be installing new landscaping along the frontages of Del Rio Road in El Camino. We will initiate our tree care and maintenance program to preserve all of the old original heritage oaks on the property and install our temporary facilities, including restrooms, a project office, a security station. And we'll also be establishing our equipment and material staging areas as well as allowing for some small recreational temporary interim lodging use to start the TOT. This temporary use will, will all be on wheels and non-permanent, making it easy to relocate or remove as needed and should and will only last until our phase, our phase one permanent permits have been received within hopefully a 12 month window or sooner. And basically this next slide gives an idea on a satellite image of what that could look like. It's the areas in green that we're proposing for some interim use. Uh, this is a phasing tentative map. Again, the area for the lodging doesn't necessarily need to occur on Del Rio and El Camino. We just located there because it was the easiest and flattest portion of the project. You know, if the city would require us to relocate in a different section of the property, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that. But I think what's really key is with the interim use, all of the support that we're giving it in terms of a check in office, a security shack, a bath house, restroom facilities. Here's an example of an ADA compliant restroom facility, also a portable dump station, interim privacy screens, interim landscaping, you know, fully enclosed trash enclosures, again, screening, stabilized entrances and roads, picking tables, fire pits, Adirondack chairs, walking paths. And kind of my favorite are the pop up vendors that you see in the bottom right hand corner. And here's another example of what, what a based DG road could look like. They can be very beautiful. It's what we plan to do. And then also the screening, we'd love to see some kind of screening along Del Rio.
I've lost connection. Is anyone else?
The property.
Oh, there we go. He's back. We lost you for a minute.
Uh oh. Do we, do we know?
About 15 seconds worth of speech maybe or so.
Screening along Del Rio Road.
Okay, right. So the screening along Del Rio Road, we, we see can be a very beautiful and a, you know, a very key marketing piece to the overall success of the project, showing what's to come to get community interest in the project as they pass by, which is shown by these kind of images to the, to the top and bottom corners. Did I mention the DG base pass, how they can be very, very beautiful and aesthetically pleasing? Okay, very good. All right. Well, moving on, the interim use we're seeing is a non-permanent kind of grass and gravel kind of mixture of what we're showing here. And then for us, we see phase two, we would like it to begin in June of 2022 by building the.
We lost you again, Ted.
Uh oh, Ted's still out. Let's just pause here for a moment. Jack or Jenny, are you able to weigh in? For, for Ted on this?
This was supposed to be Jeff's problem.
Yeah, this happens sometimes. Okay. Give him a moment to reset. Well. Kelly, do you have? Ted's number.
Looks like he's.
Yes, I'm, I'm back. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, yes. Great.
Okay, my apologies. We're realizing that there's a little bit of a bandwidth issue with other people kind of logging in. So we've had everybody shut down their computers. My apologies. What I was saying was that our permanent uses, commercial uses will be fully available, open and operational once phase two is complete. Those uses. It's pausing again. It'll look like this in a more detailed sense based on the tentative map. Everything in red. It will include the, the outdoor open space amenities such as bocce and pickleball, outdoor bowling, you know, cornhole, maybe some frisbee golf. The, the condo over retail will also be completed along El Camino to look like this. We also have a focus on food. We'd like to have lots of food opportunity within the retail underneath the condos to help support the lodging use and also provide more amenities to the northern Del Rio part of Atascadero. And then we also want to see a focus on craft beverages, organic winery, micro breweries, craft cider house, coffee roaster cafe, a fresh or organic juice bar, micro distillery, Bucha House. And then the final RV lodging, the permanent lodging should look a lot more like this with permanent pads and all the hookups as well. Moving on to our open space portion of the project, we see lodging happening within the opening, within the open space such as water bungalows, which are located at the far west, southern corner of the property. Yes, we can use recycled water. There'll be plenty of it. There will be lots of gray water. And we love the idea of stocking the pond with fish. We think it'd be awesome to have a little, a little trout farmer or something or bass, you know, where you can come with your kids and you could drop a line off, off your bungalow and, and it, you know, have, share that experience. Next is we, we want to see this vintage RV camp camper village, if you will, that would happen towards the center of the project, kind of located in that red shaded area. I think there's a lot of people that are nostalgic for the old vintage VWs and would love to come back and kind of relive their, their early, their early days and, and share it with their family as well. The glamp ground, yes, it's kind of, it's like a little cabin, if you will. And they will be located to the, the east, southern east portion of the property highlighted in yellow. And they'll be clustered more like this. We don't see them, you know, we want them to be clustered in a way where there's still privacy for each of the specific, you know, people staying. Also, we see the airstream city happening towards the center of the project, highlighted in green, kind of above the amphitheater, if you will. These are very popular now. I think there's something similar going across the street on the other side of the highway from, from Del Rio. The boxcar hotel, this is one of my favorites. We see this as a very, very creative use happening above the amphitheater and could act as like a box seat, if you will, to any of the shows or performances. And we think that people are going to really enjoy that location because of, because of that opportunity. Also, the entertainment center will be built. We have this 30,000 square foot entertainment center. We'll have this indoor and outdoor relationship will spill out onto the plaza. It will include, you know, a modern bowling alley, digital bowling. It'll include the billiards, the arcade, also the music rooms and the virtual golf. That's a big thing these days. But really this is the focus of creating that fun, safe family environment for everyone to come and, and enjoy themselves, which, which currently North County is, it, it really needs. And this is the outside of the entertainment center. The concept for it is kind of the upper left corner picture. And then you have the renderings below. Obviously the renderings don't do it justice. It will be very aesthetically appealing when it's, when it's built. Next we move into phase three of the project. And, you know, here on phase three, we see this starting sometime in December of 2023. It'll create that residential buffer along the top of Del Rio Ranch. You know, that'll provide that visual and geographic sound and light buffer for the existing residential neighborhoods to the east and northeast Del Rio Ranch. We want this done prior to starting our larger, more centralized commercial construction for obvious reasons. And this is kind of what the tentative map would look like, something similar to this. And then here's just more conceptual kind of imagery showing we're going for that agrarian kind of farmhouse style that everybody loves these days. And then moving on to phase four, and really what we want to do is just provide a little more context, you know, to Kelly's presentation regarding the phases. This phase will be the construction of the hotel, the commercial center, the parking structure, and then those final site improvements. The tentative map would show this, the areas highlighted in. The tentative map would show this, the areas highlighted in blue. That's where we're proposing to do that portion of development. Hold on. We are, it jumped on me. Okay. And so a part of that is this conference center. We love the conference center concept that has the idea of this, all the walls are mobile, so they open, they're offerable, so they open to the outdoors. So you have this, you know, indoor-outdoor relationship that's more COVID-friendly for events in the future. And then also, the conference center can be broken into smaller sections or areas, or breakout areas, if you will. It'd be perfect for weddings, guest speakers, for trainings, you know, trade shows and that sort of thing. Currently, there really isn't anything like this in North County. I think the closest thing is the fairgrounds of Paso. And then next is the outdoor amphitheater. Here, we see this seating up to 300 attendees. It will obviously comply with all the noise ordinance with the city. It won't operate, it'll operate in between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then if there was ever a performance that went over 10:00 p.m., there'd have to be an individual, you know, temporary permit issued for that. We're currently working with our sound engineer for the sound mitigation measures and design. One of the key ones we see is that the sound system will have the noise measures already programmed in the software so that it will never go above the recommended limits. The parking structure facade will need to match the kind of a similar facade to the retail component along El Camino, so that way it really disguises that parking structure. You know, there's nothing uglier than a parking structure that, that nobody really took the time to put some kind of design elements, you know, to add to it. So we want to make sure that it's visually appealing on Del Rio as well. The Boutique Hotel will also carry the same Del Rio-specific plan, design requirements with wood components, you know, shed roofs, gable roofs, also having, you know, large glass, you know, a framed glass storefront component, and then we'll have a pool as well. And, you know, something that we studied was the 2019, 2021 city budget. And really, in the budget, we found this area that, you know, I think it was in the city manager's report that discussed what the long-term economic development goals were for the city of Atascadero. And really, what was emphasized was leveraging this place-making in the commercial areas. And so looking at, you know, nine out of the 10 overall economic goals, we believed our project really supports all of them except for examining the future uses of the city-owned lots to best facilitate vibrancy in downtown. Otherwise, I think we do a really good job, this project does a really good job for helping support the economic initiatives that were laid out in the budget. Additionally, we are focused on the TOT aspect of the project. You know, we believe that the TOT aspect of the project is a huge money generator and income supporter revenue for the city. If you look, if you look at the city's budget, it shows between 2019 and 2020, and then 2021, that the city was expecting to receive 1.4 to 1.6 million dollars in TOT, you know, from all of the, you know, local hotels and transit lodging. Remember that number, kind of keep in your mind as a baseline as we kind of move to the next slide. Additionally, we took a look at how does the city of Atascadero compare to other cities, specifically focusing on sales tax and TOT. So the little red circle kind of indicates what that section is out of the overall city revenue as compared to the city of Pisma Beach. Why is Pisma Beach doing so well? They've got great sales tax revenue and great TOT revenue. So for us, it's really important that we provide something that's going to help the city in this area. So we did the projections and we show that this project alone should more than double the city's TOT revenue, upwards of 1.5 million dollars. In addition, we studied the Measure D, sales tax initiative. We projected out what sales tax we are looking to generate from the site, and we see that as being over $400,000 in additional sales tax. So what are the direct, you know, economic benefits? For one, there's a city maker project. For two, we believe this project will generate 350 to 400 new jobs and support those jobs, as well as create over 1.5 million dollars in new TOT with over $400,000 in new sales tax revenue for a combined estimate of 2 million dollars of new revenue to the city. It'll create new tourism-serving attraction for the city. It'll support that sales tax Measure D and also support the Atascadero tourism-serving district as well, again, generating over $2 million in new revenue to the city, which is about 20% of the overall budget, if I'm not mistaken, or sorry, 10% of the overall budget, if I'm not mistaken. And for us to think that a project, one project can do that is really incredible. So next, we kind of want to move on to the interim use request. You know, Kelly did briefly mention it, and for us, I think it's important to review that, you know, we're proposing, this interim use that we're proposing is intentionally designed to be non-permanent and can be relocated or removed, you know, the same day. As Phase Two of the project, sorry, as Phase One of the project is approved and permitted, it's going to take time for that. Also, the interim use is a major requirement from our lender. Without it, our project will become impossible to finance, given today's post-pandemic environment. As such, we kindly ask the planning commission to consider one of the two options. One would be to approve our request for the interim use this evening with the condition that we work with the city planning department on developing, you know, further requirements and further study on the conditions to allow it. Or two, approve the project with the issue of the interim use to be deferred to city council for their review and/or approval. Please note that if the project planning commission approval is continued for another planning commission hearing, it will cause us to miss our escrow window with Walmart and put basically a nail in the coffin of this project as we're scheduled to close at the end of June. And finally, you know, so there's our request, options one, options two. You know, maybe you guys can be creative and come up with another option. That's what we're suggesting. We found a great case study. This is at Tobin James Winery in Paso Robles. And so we thought this was a great case study because of the example of the RV lodging, you know, that's occurring on a two-acre dirt lot across from Tobin James Winery, which is approximately the same size of interim use lodging we are proposing. The city of Paso Robles allows this use. Please keep in mind, this is 100% dry camping without any hookups, without any temporary power, without temporary water or firewater, without any other onsite bathrooms, without any security, and without any check-in area or even a swept stabilized entrance. We believe this example shows that even a dry camping option can be successful, and other cities have found a way to work with their local businesses to support their business operations. The Del Rio Ranch project is much too important to our families, our local community, and to the city of Atascadero to not find a way to work together and ensure this project is fully supported and successful. And here's what the actual onsite lodging looks like. You can see there's no stabilized, you know, entrance. There's really no stabilized access or circulation. We're proposing to do something a lot better than this, but this just gives you an example of what the city of Paso Robles is allowing and is doing it successfully. With that, I just, I just want to say that, you know, our team here is fully committed to making this city maker project a reality and are asking for the support of the planning commission and city staff to help make this project possible for everyone. We want the future of Atascadero to be bright and prosperous for all. This project will do exactly that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ted. We're going to go and open it up for the public. If any members of the public would like to make a comment, if they could please raise their hand on Zoom, or if you're on your phone, do star nine. And please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
First, we have Jack Phelan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mike Nanschak for public comment.
Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. I am Mike Nanschak, and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to speak on this project. As a North County resident for a couple decades now, I'm really excited to be working with the Cal Coastal team. It's a local company that's creating amenities and even affordable housing in Atascadero, which is really important right now and has been for quite some time. This company's projects have positive impacts that are helping to address some of the economic challenges that Atascadero continues to face. Some of you know that I was the lead on a county-wide economic development organization that helped Atascadero's businesses and even the city itself, and we worked very closely with city staff, all about creating a better economy. With my experience, though, in helping the community, I believe I have a unique perspective on Atascadero's economy and ways in which to address these ongoing challenges that we all seem to be watching play out within the, within the region. But what I did learn is this. What I learned about Atascadero's economy over the years is that it's really all about helping the local businesses, growing the local economy so that we can be more sustainable and more resilient, more sustainable for the economic ups and downs, and more resilient when things like COVID happens. But the one challenge that we seem to have and talk about within the city time and time again is this jobs-housing imbalance. So in to addresses this jobs-housing imbalance, it's really important that we talk about, you know, things like creating the job base, a larger job base of head of household jobs. And by that, we will diversify and grow the local economy. These challenges cause many residents to not be able to work in the city that they live in. Many of us know these people, and some even have to work very far distances because of the lack of jobs within the city limits. So we're even losing residents permanently because of this lack of higher-wage jobs. It's something we can address, and it's completely possible. So creating more jobs in the community is really important for both the city and that city itself as a government entity, as well as the residents. Fewer high-wage jobs means fewer taxes collected from spending, thus fewer resources for community services paid by those taxes. So what's the solution? Well, in short, it's creating and attracting more business. It's more affordable workforce housing, much like one of the projects that the company is doing called Grand Oaks. And it's more community amenities, like this project, Del Rio, which is a place where people want, a community where people want to live in, they want to spend their money in, and they want to invest in and grow jobs. So just, just as a side note, approximately two years ago, we surveyed businesses both in and outside of the city. And the purpose was, and it was working with city staff, we interviewed business leaders, and we asked that question, what's it going to take to grow your business here? And they all said the same thing, which was the city needs more entertainment options, more eating options, and more affordable housing for their employees. If we address these things, the economy of Atascadero will really improve for the long haul and be more resilient and be more sustainable. So kind of in closing here, we need to maximize the city's competitiveness. There are far too many people, and I know it was mentioned on the, by one of the members of the committee, that far too many people leave the city and spend their money in other cities, in fact, even other counties. We need to, we need to stop that by way of creating more ways to spend their dollars in Atascadero instead of elsewhere. And I think these, this project does exactly that. It really makes the city of Atascadero and its economy far more competitive with other cities and even other counties by creating more entertainment, more shopping, lodging. And again, this is for locals and visitors. That's really important. And then lastly, the Phase Three, which is the housing up on top. Again, we cannot, we just don't have enough workforce housing. We haven't for a long time. I know the city's helping to work on that, and this would help address that problem. But I firmly believe that this is the type and quality of project that will help Atascadero be more competitive with other cities, counties, and also it'll serve the needs of the community, its visitors, as well as the businesses that are here, is really what I want to call a win-win-win. So thank you for allowing me to speak on this project. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there's interest, I'd like to make the motion if someone, if there's no other comments.
Personally, just give my opinion. I would, I would like to see this project move ahead as expedited as possible and hand it off to council so that they can make that final decision, so we don't hold up the project. So any motion that supports that, I'd be in favor.
Thank you. So reading from the resolutions in our staff report, it states that we are recommending to the city council approval of the general plan amendments, zoning map amendment, amendments to the Del Rio commercial area-specific plan, a conditional use permit to establish a concept master plan of development, including approval of three conditionally allowed uses, those being RV resort, conference center, and mixed-use commercial buildings, and a Hyde exception for the Del Rio Ranch project. In addition, I would like to have, hopefully, full recommendation from the entire planning commission in support of the giving direction or giving the direction to the city council, recommending to the city council for them to work on trying to provide a temporary path to allow the applicant to have temporary uses as he has discussed with us.
Annette, is that clear enough?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Jason, okay. Annette, can you do real call on this?
Yes. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Definitely.
Vice Chairperson Keen?
Yes.
Chairperson Van Den Eyck?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, good luck to you all. And staff, you have your work cut out for you to get something together.
You be safe.
Breathe deep.
Only sad this is in Atascadero, so I won't get a chance to go glamping in Atascadero.
We could still do that, Tori.
I feel like that'd be a great girls' weekend, like just get a bunch of friends. Oh, we, yes, absolutely. We, just you and me. That way, we're still following the rules.
Yeah, right. Can't have the majority of you hanging out.
No, no boys allowed.
I was amused by the organic vineyards too, because it's not the processing. In Italy, you get testa brute up. That's a headache because there's, we get it here in the United States because we have sulfur in our wines for preservative. In Europe, they don't put that in their wines, and so you don't get headaches. And so that's organic for me.
I'll second that. Yeah, sulfites really get me. Oh, my gosh. Yeah.
Well, it's really interesting about that temporary use stuff because I know that this was a bigger, this is like a bigger conversation than just this site, obviously. It's what is our ordinance structure, our fee structure? What does, what does all of that look like? I mean, I do, I do hear the staff, this is setting some kind of precedence. And I, and I think it's a good thing that we're looking at telling the council to look at options to adapt rather than just say, we're not doing it.
Exactly.
You're welcome, Phil.
Sorry, Phil, and I'm glad that it got brought up.
Job security, Phil. It's job security.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments or reports on anything that's coming up that you guys are aware of?
I'm sorry, I just want to interrupt one more time. It looks like Ted Lawton is raising and unraising his hand, like he wants to speak. Is there an opportunity for him to do that?
Who wants to say thank you?
All right.
Well, we close the public comment, though. Sure, Ted?
Yeah, hey, hey, I just, yes, absolutely right. I want to say thank you guys so much. And then Dennis, we are, we are producing what we call, this is proprietary, our no, 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 no wine, which means no added sulfites, no added sugars, no added yeast. I mean, it'll be, what's that term?
Headache-free.
Well, no, not headache-free, but it'll be gluten-free. It'll be one of the first gluten-free wines ever.
Have you raised?
Yes, exactly. But I think that the idea is we don't, you know, no headaches, right? No, 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 no headaches. And just thanks so much for understanding and listening to us this evening. We will work diligently on figuring out a way to make this work. So thanks again. Enjoy your evening.
Interestingly, there's a commercial on television for, I think, eyelash liner that is gluten-free. So I'm trying to figure out how that is, but it makes good advertising.
Phil, are you ready for a director's report?
Yes, we do not have a hearing scheduled for you in two weeks. Don't have an item ready for that, but I'm sure that we'll have some items ready for you soon. Lots of stuff brewing, lots of stuff we're cooking up, all kinds of plans coming forward this summer. We definitely have a busy time with the city council on a few matters coming up. So if you have any questions for me about development projects about around town or anything else happening, I'm happy to answer those, but nothing in our next agenda, so you can.
Bill, I heard that I saw, I saw an email that we're having a ribbon cutting at the plaza or whatever, what is that called?
That is right. There is no name for that plaza yet. So I hope at some point there'll be a naming contest for that plaza that's now built over what's, was a Tascadaro mall. I just, I tend to call it a Tascadaro plaza, but it's not been named yet. And it's just about finished, they're putting the final touches on landscaping right now. In a week or two, they'll, they'll put the lighting onto it. It's going to have some really neat lighting too. There'll be some uplights for the trees, there'll be some string-type lights that look like string lights that'll be underneath the pergola structure. And we're really also trying to find a really good tenant for the location where the mechanic moved out. So I wanted to publicly announce that. If anybody knows anybody that would like to go in a spot with roll-up doors that's not a mechanic, that would be wonderful, because we'd like a different kind of land use on that plaza. And then there are tenants that are moving forward with La Plaza as well on the other side of that plaza. So that plaza is going to be a neat spot, will be ribbon cutting soon. And it's kind of a preliminary ribbon cutting, because also later on, there'll be a bigger celebration at that location in the summer or towards the end of the summer, I think. So yeah, it's a neat, a neat little project that's going to be a great adjunct to the larger part of the sort of El Camino downtown enhancement plan.
I'd make a suggestion for that garage, a open, closed-door farmer's market.
Yeah, that's an awesome, that's an awesome idea. There you go.
I'd love to see something like the Colony Market in Delhi. They were really creative with that old gas station. It looks awesome. That's such a cool place.
Going in and doing your shopping in a little market behind there, that'd be nice.
Okay, put up the money.
I have a question, Phil.
Yes.
It's around, well, the one piece that Ted in his presentation said that they're not really addressing. And so it piqued my interest. I was like, well, what city property do we have in downtown? That, is there anything going on as far as mutterings or conversations around developing or pocket gardens that are just?
Sunken gardens.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, could you speak to any of that, that point?
There are very few city properties. The only property that the city actually has downtown that's outside of City Hall and Sunken Gardens is the property that has the yellow structure on it adjacent to the parking lot downtown. And outside, that is right next to our Centennial Plaza and Bridge, next to, across from City Hall.
Is that where the museum was?
Yeah, there's the, the history museum is still there. They've been closed for a year now. So that's the one property that the city does own right around that Centennial Plaza. We're looking at options for that. In fact, at some point later this summer, we're going to have a study session on what to do with those properties and how to best fit those properties into the downtown and make them productive. So that's one focus area, so that is a discussion. But there aren't other properties that, that the city has that we can do things with. They're all privately owned. The rest of the properties down.
There are things like rights of way that could be, I mean, the, I'm an advocate for piazzas behind the hotel and on the other side of the street between traffic and Entrada and East Mall, those alleyways behind those things, those are city properties.
Now that you mention that, that's a really good point, because when I was thinking properties, I'm thinking vacant lots, but those alleyways, the alleyways behind Dead Oak Brewery and the new pie shop there and the alleyway behind Streetside are these fantastic spaces that could be reinvented as a kind of a Tascadaro downtown funk zone and have things upfront on them.
We're pulling dead ends on traffic way now. You can't go through that because of the island. You could close that off and put two business lots there and you could work through the parking area behind the old fire station. That's a city lot too, parking lot back there too.
Where do you put these conversations, Phil? Like besides the, some good chatter after a meeting?
That's a really good question. Where do we, so these, you know, it takes a conversation to make things happen. I can't tell you.
Oh, I'm not saying I don't like it. I just don't want to like, oh, great. And then, you know, we're on to general planning time in a few months and then we just forget about it.
So as we, as we get into scoping out the general plan and the planning commission will be very closely involved in that later this summer, these are the kind of things we bring up with the public. These are the kind of things we bring up with the city council. These are the kind of things we bring up with the consultant that we hire to develop our general plan, so that they end up as policy, so that they end up as city council direction. There's two opportunities. One is when we create policy, the other is when we do our strategic plan, as we do every couple of years, and getting these things into the strategic plan and getting these seeds planted for these great ideas. And so anytime we have a discussion like this, I also take notes on these topics and sometimes they end up in the minutes as well. So it's valuable to have these discussions and kind of bring up these ideas about what the community's thinking and what we're thinking should be, you know, good future projects, because certainly our downtown's a priority. And if you look at our current strategic plan right now, there is a number of things that are already in there for our downtown for reinvigorating spaces. The big one, of course, is the downtown enhancement plan, which includes the angled parking in the center of El Camino and landscaping around that and slowing down the traffic, which again, in turn, will create a whole nother host of creating these spaces downtown that are more walkable, more attractive, more place-making, that'll tie everything together, it'll be the glue. But then we can do more with that, such as looking at the alleyways, looking at, you know, things like Centennial Plaza and the vacant lots around that plaza and figuring out how to activate those spaces.
Sunken Gardens. There used to be a gas station in front of Sunken Gardens in El Camino Row a long time ago.
In Sunken Gardens, yeah, it was right on the park, yeah.
I think that we could, we have to decide who we want Sunken Gardens for, but I think we can enhance Sunken Gardens by putting two buildings, commercial, not commercials, of city buildings along the side, and we could use that to frame City Hall. A big picture frame, it looked gorgeous. And we could put a, I thought about putting a piazza out front that would have plumbing inside of it. And you just have to be persistent. I have my ideas on piazzas, go back 25 years. And I've been talking to people at the city for 25 years about making piazzas in these areas.
So you know, Dennis, just so you know, I actually designed the Sunken Garden, so I would not support that.
I was gonna say, ooh, we have one key player in the midst here.
Well, I would still be this Sunken Gardens, but I would just have a kind of half of it. The front half would be kind of an area that would be used for traveling exhibits, for a library, for a police station, whatever, something that we could use the frame and picture frame around City Hall.
What I, what I will add to this conversation is that it's the first time in many years that there's been multiple properties available around Sunken Gardens. So the Century 21 building is for sale. There's a blue building that's currently a dentist office that's on West Mall that's currently for sale. There's another building that's for lease. There's other buildings such as some of the other locations that I can't really name because they're not on the market, but that softly those people are willing to sell. There's the vacant properties around Centennial Plaza. So it's an amazing time for opportunity right now, without even looking at the park, but the properties that surround that park now more than ever are available. And so Laura Lai, our Economic Development Director and myself, are really working on trying to find people who might want to invest in that area for the future, so.
And she's on the call right now. Laura Lai's on the call.
She is there, and she can even chime, she can even chime in right now.
Hey.
Let her, let her, let her speak, Mariah, because she's part of our group.
And if you haven't seen her face, maybe she wants to turn her video on too.
I don't know if she can do that.
But I won't make her.
I think I saw her last, was she at that meeting you were at a couple of days ago when I saw you? Is that Laura Lai with you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, there she is.
Hi, everybody. It's a pleasure to virtually meet you all. You too. Great, I'll turn on my camera so I can formally introduce myself. Hi, everybody.
Thank you.
Enjoying the great conversation presentation. Yeah, it's not, it's not a fake background, it's a real one. Thank you. No, I look forward to working with all of you. And yes, anybody who's listening who's excited for some opportunity, there's great opportunities for investment in Tascadaro right now. As a homegrown resident, it's so exciting to see so much possibility. I mean, everything could really blossom and, and take on a new life and be hustling and bustling, you know, within a matter of months as soon as, you know, La Plaza ribbon is cut. I mean, there's a lot of opportunity or, you know, it could absolutely stay the same and it's really a matter of someone stepping up and saying, I'd love to be part of the change. So we look forward to working with you all and that's what I'm here for. And just give me a call and I can put my, maybe someone can put my information in the chat if it's in there. We can connect.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was a perfect introduction. What a great opportunity. Unplanned, but it was perfect. Thank you, Laura Lai.
Thank you for having me.
She was listening to us.
Yes.
The one thing I asked Phil when I was thinking about the commission and public servency, I was like, what, what do we do, like besides show up to these meetings? Like do our research, ask good questions, like outside of, he's like, economic, you know, development? Like I need some support, getting the word out to the community, trying to recruit, seeing what fits where, you know, talk it up. You're a host people.
Yes, and Laura Lai is our biggest advocate for that. So you should talk to, you should speak to Laura Lai, Victoria, so.
Great.
That would be a great, a great option.
All right, well, I'm going to go back to my vacation. Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, yeah, you're with mom.
Yeah, I'm in Idaho right now.
Yeah.
Be safe going to Texas.
Yeah, Texas in two, two weeks, so.
Drive.
Thank you. Actually, we're flying.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
That's a little later where you're at, so sorry we kept you up so late.
Well, thank you, everybody. We'll go ahead and close our meeting and look forward to seeing you at our next scheduled meeting.
Thank you.